Um, Georgia's starting quarterback was hurt though, right?
Well, yeah.
Carson, Carson.
Arizona's last night had their running back and their.
Yeah, they uh. So it's. That main receiver of Arizona was really good too, so the big hit. Um. Jordan.
Hi Debbie.
Hello there. Good, how are you?
Good.
Um. Sorry for the fact that I think that is just every.
They are.
Good. Good. Wow. It's good, it's just I don't need any more goods.
Yeah.
I'm eating way too much.
It's good.
Very good. He's got.
Keep it going.
I love that.
Thank you, I'll be sliding.
Oh, thank you. Not bending well, you're.
It's not working well.
Well, I can relate to that. Somewhere stuck here.
Going to the same doctors and stuff.
For a while on the other hip. Yeah, we can go on with that. I've started.
He hasn't played this fight today.
Yeah, you should be live, there you go.
Okay, well, we will go ahead and get started. I'm sure Lisa will probably be coming, but it's six oh three and this is the work meeting on January second, twenty twenty five. We appreciate you being here. I have a couple of announcements. Before we get started, then I'll try to remember to when Lisa comes in. So um, there are three, let's see. Morgan just gave this to me. Dell, Debbie, Bryce, you still need to turn in your ethics pledge to Reed.
Speaking of that, now the new one is due by the end of the month. That's the one the F X will fill out, giving employment, a whole bunch of gobbledygook. Uh, did you get a copy of that from the the Recorder's Association?
I think so.
We ought to maybe, we will, I'll modify that to relate to Hooker, but you might just send what they sent us out so people start looking at it. But we'll modify it so it's.
When we went over this, did we have an option of doing one or the other? Is this one that you wrote for us or this one? We're there too.
Yeah.
Debbie, we can get another copy for you. Don't worry, we'll get you another copy.
Yeah, this is the, this is the one that she was gonna pass out to you or send to you. And I haven't.
Well, it's been modified soon.
But that outlines the different things.
You told us that that is the one that you reviewed and kind of made it fit. But we can do one or the other, is that right?
No, you you definitely have to fill out this one.
Okay.
Because this one has different things to watch it disclose. This one just acknowledges that you read all the sort of material we understand, or you at least quite understand. Nobody understands. So you probably have to go.
Okay. And then the new one, Reed, that you said is the one that you put you like your spouse.
I think this is the the one that is the new one, but I'm all pretty sure.
When when we were just barely at the sewer district meeting, they passed that one and we had to put our spouse, what they did.
Very intrusive, I think.
It was a lot of information, but it didn't have to be not notarized. We just had to fill it out.
It has to go on the website.
But it had to go on the website, yeah.
Let's.
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 All since they know.
Well, yeah, you you know, they're very careful about their own product.
Exactly.
But nobody else's.
Yeah.
I don't wanna jump on the lead, essentially, but sometimes they play here.
Well, we'll we'll try to find out then by next time if we have to have that that new one, which.
Yeah, and I think that one.
Might be it.
It may have been my shot before we get the one from the.
This one.
Where the uh Recorder's Association, yeah. So I'll take a look at that and see if that compares favorably to the one I've got. Yeah. The the first one though, it just says you read everything you ought to do right now. The other one, you can wait and let's make sure we provide one first. We'll probably send, try to send that by email so you don't quit on it.
I know they had told us at the sewer district if we'd filled it out anywhere else. So if you're on any other districts, like Ryan, I don't know if you have to fill out something with the fire. But but if I had filled it, they said if you filled it out in your city, you don't have to fill it out again. And I said, I hadn't saw that.
Problem is, the city has to have it on their website.
Yeah.
If if you give them a copy of what you did there, they put it on the website here, but otherwise you're gonna do.
Yeah. Okay, we'll find that out. Okay, so um, we're in the process of working on a new website. Rebecca Rowley, she was a foster. She's working on creating a new website for us. And I think I don't know if I mentioned this before or not, but she would like a picture of all the city council on her, on the website with a little statement or two of why you love Hooker. And so we've kind of talked about it and thought maybe it'd be easier if just next meeting on the sixteenth, if you come and we take your picture here. Does everybody agree about to that on the sixteenth, getting your picture taken to be on the website? Yes, you are, you are, you are, right? We thought we could plan and have it be in front of the flag or something.
Interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, we were going to just bring it on you tonight, but then we thought no, we'd wait and do that. And if any of you have any pictures of Hooker you'd like to send in, you want on the website, you don't have to, but she just asked, but we think it'll be, we think that'll be really good. So um, another thing too, I had mentioned to you before that we had applied for a six hundred thousand dollar grant that would have helped pay for the storm drain project on fifty nine hundred. Sadly, we did not get it. So when we're going through budget items, we're going to have to somehow come up with that money through our budget. So we were hoping that we we did, but we didn't.
Which which one was that?
It was one that was a rural Utah grant that could be used specifically for sewer projects or storm water projects. And we kind of heard about it at the last minute, but we went ahead and applied for it. So we're figuring that storm drain project is going to be about eight hundred thousand dollars. It was one, I guess it was approved a few years back, but there's a hundred and sixty nine thousand that was in the ARPA funds that last. Is that just last meeting, I think, when we told Kami it would be okay to use that money towards that? But then now we're going to have to come up with the additional somewhere from. But again, we all talk about that when we go through more with budget, so. Okay, so discussion on agenda items. Everybody has a copy of the agenda?
Just back to what we just talked about.
Yes.
Project building, you know, one that presented last week. There were several of those line items that several of us were pretty particular about, but we're questioning. And one was, I can't remember, it was a pretty good chubby change for something that didn't seem like it was necessary. So before we approve that money, I want to go through that again and say, what's this for? Why do we need this? And like every single thing that didn't seem relevant.
One, one thing that needs to happen too, before any of that money is approved, which will be happening, is I think they're scheduling a meeting with the developer because because we have some concerns whether we're still even on the same page with that, because I think, I'm I'm not sure what year that was. I I don't know how many years.
It's not three years.
Yeah, so we just want to make sure that everybody's still on the same page of what he thinks he's providing, what we're providing. So before, yes, you're a hundred percent right on that. Before we ever agree to spend any money anywhere with that, we'll go through and have, and I think that meeting will probably be taking place maybe within the next week or so. And then when we have that, we'll we'll get back on that.
Next thing I wanted to charge is for mobilization.
Yeah.
To that.
Yeah. What is that? Thousand dollars or more?
But you know, like, what?
Would give you down the hill box.
Yeah.
Very low.
Mobilization is a whole new thing too, that used to not always be on there, that is. And I only became aware of even what it was because it started showing up on our ramp grant applications. And that would be part of one. And I even asked, what is this? And they said it's something that gets built in because if someone has to like bring in a um dump truck or bring in a backhoe or whatever, and I I I asked the same thing, but you know, what is this? So all those, but sometimes they build it in and I don't know that they end up always being the exact charge, but no, we'd have a chance to prove that. I know you went over and saw the um, CSOS. Do you have a report or anything what you?
Just. It's it's not a candidate for a major grant, I don't think. Um. The roof is leaving, like I said. I mean, it's a great asset for the city to have, but what do you actually? So because there's a lot of, you know, drop ceilings and wiring and all kinds of stuff, so um. But it would be nice, I think, in the in the grand scheme of things, is that big open area somehow making a facility where we can rent it out to the citizens to have get together or reunions or whatever. I think that would be, we don't have them right now, this isn't yet, but. So that's just something to think about, something to spend money on.
Yeah.
But hopefully they'll give us the cell tower and we'll have the revenue off of it someday.
Use the cell tower?
Yeah, you never know, they might abandon it.
So Brian Steckline, who's our one that's the volunteer over those, you know, committees, he he had asked, it's been a while ago, about a place that retired man, when he very first came in and talked to me, could do like woodworking projects or something. Anyway, so we went over with him, didn't we, Morgan? And he looked in that and yeah, because he said, well, maybe there's even other things, you know, maybe even to do some art classes. Oh, and while we were over there, I think we did see two different boxes of records. You know how you had mentioned about records? I think there was a box in that one room and then there was a box in one of the others.
The one first one. Piles on to the boxes.
It's a box of the records.
So anyway.
Yeah.
Kind of records.
It's a gold sixty seven.
All things that played on the radio.
Radio station.
That might ask the bag.
Yeah, I think we, I think we actually, Brian and I, go on and just pull one off the top. There's always someone.
Yeah.
But anyway.
Well, we won't give up on the, I mean, I think we maybe could find something.
Yeah, I think I think that would turn into something.
Okay.
So on the agenda, a question of the um changes to title ten. Um, we also have an email I'm gonna land that. Does anybody have a number one?
Hey, yes, I did find that out. So I talked to um text Brandon, then, you know, received more information back, talked to Reed today, and it does. So and I sent back um Amanda, thank you for letting us know. I I wasn't aware of that. I'll try to get more on top of that. I I did never remember it's.
Did Brandon check time? Is it is it ten days?
Ten days. It's ten days. We were hoping maybe it was just seven days and we could have had it on for next week's planning commission meeting, but it's not. It's ten days. And so we will notice that and have it on our sixteenth meeting.
So it's be a, it's be a public hearing somewhere. And if it's not done at the at that level, at the planning commission level, we're not giving you.
And the other question I had, I mean, we're talking two hundred plus pages of Title Ten there. I don't know about anyone else. We don't have three times, just sitting three, two hundred pages of Title Ten. Yeah. At least have somebody go through the highlights or the news you've shown us.
Okay, I've already given that job to Malcolm.
Okay.
He's gonna, he's gonna talk to us about that tonight because um, and what they printed off for you is the chapter eight, which is the new part of it, because yeah, we've, and you know, we had a couple of meetings where we all met and it's, and then I know planning commissions, time was, you know, they've gone to spend a lot of time going through this as well as Amanda, Jared and Malcolm went through it and they spend a lot of time going through it. Um, one thing I did receive a letter on December seventeenth that stated, this is from the Department of Workforce Services, because they're the ones that actually are over this, and it said, they just wanted to remind us that the deadline to adopt these policies is December thirty first, twenty twenty four, so we're two days over. But like you said, as long as we're following it.
Important part is you follow law.
Yeah.
So you need a few more days to add some of the orders, that's living.
So starting now, any subdivisions will be following the state law. And how they need to be done as far as only one final approval with planning commission, they no longer come to city council. There's not a preliminary, preliminary, final, final, it's one final that goes to.
It's totally the same thing, but you bypass the electrician, every city in the state, you know, any type of drill for development. Yeah, this is just, you know, Ryan called this.
Especially since we represent people in the community.
Yeah.
And what they want, and so it's not going to hear us.
Well, it's all still through you, but not, not the subject.
So um, so I'll I'll bring up the elephant room, so. I I requested this discussion, mostly we're gonna discuss selection and approval process of planning commission members, so I think it's probably a good time to talk about that.
Okay.
Now, this is brought up, um. So I know we discussed it months ago, so a month ago, we needed to look at the selection process because we have like right now, seventy five percent of the voting population is gonna be brand new. So in my mind, if I, if I'm on with fourth and one, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna take my starters out. You know, that's kind of the way I see it. Um, obviously, you know, there needs to be change at certain points. To the point that Deborah and Ryan brought up. Um, we don't represent ourselves personally, we represent the citizens that elected us. Bottom line, we have to do what's in best interest for the city, regardless of our agenda or what we. Um. That power has been, without obligation or duty, has now been taken away from us. And it's shifted over to a body of individuals that is not, has not been elected by the officials or by the by the citizens. Um. So in my mind, I think um, I wanted to talk about this in December, but the meeting was canceled, just to kind of get ahead of the curve, but that didn't happen. I think we need to take back, and I'm not, so don't get me wrong, I'm not disapproving of these individuals by any means. Uh, I know two of them very well. Um. But I think we need to take a step back and look at this a little bit closer. And maybe come up with some, some, some ideas, some alternative methods, so we can have them stagger, so that I'll just and and really, it's kind of a protection for them as well, because do you really want to throw someone in there that uh, and they're all smart people, no doubt about it. But do you want to put them in a position where they could become vulnerable from, you know, making a a mistake not knowingly, you know, and that's very possible with the things that are on on the horizon of their city in the next, this, next year? Um, so I'm not saying disapproval, I'm saying my opinion is we table it and we come together as a council. Not just this one member. I know you had a member of the council interview um with you, with Malcolm. Um, but that's only twenty percent of the council, so I think if we put our heads together, all of us and granted, yes, you do appoint and we approve. So there's some collaboration there. We gotta work together as a team. You know, we can't just have it one way, and some people, I'm not gonna agree with them, but guess what? That's, that's the way it should be. Um, and I'm not opposed to nominating or approving someone that that I maybe disagree with. I think, you know, we table this and I don't want to get in a situation where they're gonna be embarrassed, like, hey, we're not denying that by any means, but we need to come up with a little bit better solution and put it, because I do have some ideas, and I know Deborah has some ideas. And maybe you have some ideas, but we could come together and maybe come up with something a little bit better, where all three of these still can participate in some way. But I think number one, I think it's a big mistake to take one of the most seasoned people that's been through the trenches, through the general plan, through this title ten. And Sheldon, I I don't agree with them all the time, I really don't, but I think it's a big mistake taking them off the seat, the planning commission. So what I would like to do, um, obviously, it's up to you, you uh commissioner or uh council members as well. Is move that to the uh first of the agenda, and let's just table it, and let's get together, and let's talk about this. Um, because I think replacing seventy five percent of the voting commission is a mistake. It's, they're not a mistake, but just doing that without having the training experience. Um, I think we come up with a process and we're, you know, maybe we mentor them. And and in time, you know, they they are nominated, but anyway, that's my thoughts.
Ryan, anybody else have any?
My first thought is, is we as of yesterday, we don't have a planning commission because it Friday expired, was thirty.
That's, that was my question, did they expire on the thirty first or is it the first Monday of?
The thirty first, December thirty first.
Yeah.
Sometimes they have in a position where they are, they maintain on the commission until they're repressed, you know, until a new one is.
That that is not Hooker's.
No, no, that's, that's not Hooker's, but that's what we've been talking about. I mean, if you look at other cities, there's, there's, there's a lot of different ways they do it, so that we're not losing so many of the commissions in one year. I think this has gone on years and years because we've never, we've never had it happen like this before. Where there's three members of the commission that have actually applied to be back on, and then we just replace them with somebody, Brandon. I don't know whenever that's happened before.
So a couple of questions I have, I guess. So I, so I, you know, and as I sent you in your letter, I'm following the code. Uh, I'm ten fifty two, the mayor shall appoint the members of the commission, subject to the approval of the city council. So you were mayor for four years prior to that planning commission, and you've been city council now for three years prior to that planning commission. This was, has never came up before.
That's, I think.
Well, but 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 how did we get off then?
Here's the key that triggers it all, is maybe I didn't make myself clear, but our responsibility as elected official is now being taken away and shifted to someone that's not elected. That's, that's, that's big.
So so maybe, maybe what we need to go back a little bit to then and explain this Title Ten a little bit, just real quickly. So what has happened then with Title Ten is before what would happen is someone brings in an application and it is reviewed. We haven't had a city planner before, but now we do. We have a city planner. So Malcolm, we received that application. And then we have uh, and I don't remember the exact title, we ended up calling it, but it is under the direction of planning commission, but it'll be like Malcolm, the Public Works Engineer, um, the Planning Commission Chair. They review this application and once it becomes a complete application, then it can be submitted. In the past, previously, probably maybe before, and Jared usually will say during Tracy's time, by the time planning commission ever received a subdivision to be reviewed, there would be like a memo and things would be checked off, and it would say we have all of our will coll, you know, everything was there. So planning commission's responsibility then is to go through that and look at it and say, yes, this this meets the zoning, this meets all of the code, that's what planning commission's responsibility is. So the only thing that's been changed with all of this, and this is going to be new for all of our planning commission members, because it's a new process as of, well, actually, February first, but of last year, but now for sure, by January one, now we have to be adopting it. By the time they ever look at that, it'll already have been reviewed, Malcolm will already have seen it, the engineer will have the, you know, a chairman of the planning commission at that at that time, whoever will already review it. So by the time planning commission gets it, they look at it and say, okay, does this end up following all of our zones or it doesn't? So the only thing that ended up happening, and whether we agree with it or not, it was passed by the state, is it speeds up the process because sometimes it was a lengthy process of preliminary, preliminary, final, final. Now, everything should already by the time signing commission gets it, everything should already have been read it out. They should already be able to see it. Um.
Did you talk about a member of the city council being part of that committee?
We did, mhm, we did. We talked about having.
Come up.
I can't remember if that ended up making it through, it didn't, Amanda?
Thank you, Natalie, because you are still the legislative body.
Oh, yes.
So that has to be kept completely separate. Nobody on the city council can be part of it. I don't agree with you. But that's.
Because then we're the appeal process, because then if they do deny it, then it still can come to us. We, anytime, we still can review things as an appeal, and then if we deny it, then it still can go then to our hearing officer then. So they still do have a process. Yes, so um, you know, we, we interviewed a lot of really good candidates, and Debbie will tell you that. And I could only invite one city council member, because if I had two, there was a quorum, so you can only have one. I tried to follow our code exactly how it need to be as far as transparency. We put out the applications, people applied, they came in, we did interviews. We had really good candidates that ended up applying. I guess, and I mentioned this to Debbie, you know, where some of us have been new. I guess my thinking is, some, sometime you always are new. You know, you replaced the city council member that had been sitting there, you replaced the city council member that had been sitting there, I replaced a mayor that had been. Sometime all of us are new, and I feel really confident in these three individuals that I think they will be able to just start off. Yes, there's going to be some study, there always is. I am still learning. I missed, we had to have a public I I I didn't realize that, and I missed that. But but, you know, I I went through and kind of wrote down, because when they come in and apply for a planning commission, and this is on our website, these are their qualifications. They have to be a resident of Hooker, they have to attend the monthly meetings. They may be required to attend other meetings or volunteer at special events to promote work of the committee. And it states right on there, there are no minimum skills and abilities that an applicant must have to be appointed as a planning commission member. And again, if we go back to what it states here, the mayor shall appoint the members of the commission, subject to the approval of the city council, and I believe it's been like this since the city was started.
So I, I, I get that, but we really haven't anything to say, so. The question to your point, so by the commission members term is four years, correct? How can we fix this disparity that we have? Two and three and two and three, how can we do one, one per year and two, one?
We, yeah, we can. There are ways to fix that, you know, there are ways to. There, there.
Somewhere we got off, and I I don't know why we ever did get off, because you read through in it, it'll talk about how they should have staggered terms, so this doesn't happen. So I, so anytime, like, for example, Jessica was appointed, but she was specifically appointed to fill out the end of Mary's term, so hers still ended. So no one should, it it shouldn't have, but it did. But like you mentioned, Ryan, if we don't appoint a planning commission tonight, then as of next and we don't have a planning commission, and then our next meeting won't be until the sixteenth of January, so we don't have one.
Well. I'm okay with that. Why rush it? And I know there's.
Well, you could appoint one at this point.
So what?
You know, you gotta have enough, so you can hold me, so you gotta have at least three people.
Well, none of the ones that I, I, that I really feel strongly about are, I've been chosen. Anyway, if you retain Sheldon, I'd be okay with the two others, and yeah, you can come up with some alternates or something like that, where they could be training with any weird, you know, if we start staggering any weird or one's gonna come off next year, another one, maybe next year, ten years, I don't know. Um. Amanda, show me some other cities that do it that way. Um. At some point, it needs to be fixed, if it's broke, you need to take.
You can set the rules, have an appointment however you want, but you can't do that right now for this, speaking of that.
You're gonna have to do that.
That's what I'm saying, that will apply from here on.
So when tonight, we appoint these three, then we discuss it, and then you end up appointing a sixth one. There were seven members on our planning commission, and Cory's the one that changed that, because, and then right in the resolution, it said that that ended up being changed. I I have a copy of that resolution, because it ended up being they couldn't.
I know that.
Hard to get on there, it's like a.
But there, but there's another advice and consent of the council, so if we, if we're trying to advise, what?
Ours, ours doesn't say advise and concern. Ours only, ours only says, the mayor shall appoint the members of the commission, subject to the approval of the city council. Prove off, so so I appointed him like you did in the past, and then the city council votes, votes for him. But anyway, Cory's resolution just said, um, sees a benefit in just in decreasing the number of city to five. He found it difficult to have all the assistance.
I think you have our, I'm getting four, you have the four, seven.
Four. And a lot of times they didn't have people apply, which. And a lot of times they didn't have people apply, which, well, I think things are
Certainly more.
And I think we have more involvement. And we, I, we could have as I say, we could have two.
Yeah, you can set the terms however you want. You need to do that when they're appointed, one, four years. You can do one year, two years. I don't think I do one. Now, once you get it on that staggered thing, then, then you're fine.
We'll see. And at the end of next year, then we, the end of twenty, no, two years. The end of twenty twenty six, we'll have two more that will come up. But maybe in the meantime, then, if we can get three appointed tonight, then we can talk about this and you might want to appoint maybe one more, or we can have them go for, for five years or somehow.
Well, once you appoint now, you could I don't think I've ever given anybody a one-year term. Make one of them a two-year term. And one a three-year term, so you guess. I, I'm, I'm okay with that. I think we need to have, have points of discussion. I'm, I'm okay talking about that. I don't think we should make that decision tonight. Okay, no, not ideas.
So did, did we not know about this the whole?
No, no, here's, here's, we, we discussed this prior to this in December, you know, in our work rooms, I wanted to bring this up to kind of be ahead of it. But our meeting was canceled.
Well, what about the first part of December though, or November or October?
I guess the same question is, is why didn't we have a hearing on title ten?
Then I guess no one, no one knew we were supposed to, I guess.
But anyway, my opinion is, is these three guys would be great, I'm sure. But I think we need to come up with a broader plan before we start doing that. And, uh, next time around, we maybe we go back to the seven, you know, we're seven at one time, if I understand.
Because you definitely don't have the same brand.
Well, you can increase it to seven, couldn't you?
So like I said, we could appoint these three tonight, we can discuss it, you wanna increase it to seven, next meeting, I can appoint two more in the week and we can
Well, we would like some say on those appointments as well. I know you've punked them, but I would like your consideration of every need, I think, and probably members of the council who base them or the commission.
Well, but, okay, but you, but again, I'm going back to our code, never ever was it done that way.
Third hand, what are we? We're a council.
We, we are.
So, so I don't know, I, I respect your opinion, but you're not respecting ours.
Yeah, I am.
But we've never, we've never been in this territory.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we've never been. So we have, we have one, maybe two applicants. Now it's suddenly at five, you know, this is uncharted water.
We've never had where someone has been on the commission and they wanted to be on it again, if they were just replaced this.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't have a chance to go through twenty four years and minutes, so I don't know. I, I don't know, I don't know. So, so if I'm understanding you, then your, your concern is you want Sheldon to still be in.
Absolutely. That's, that's my.
So if tonight, well, we couldn't change it tonight though for six.
It takes an ordinance change, so.
So, so if we appointed these three tonight, you do an ordinance change next meeting to six and we appoint Sheldon next meeting. Does that work? Well, we have six on our council. Counting me, so we could have six.
If they had a tie. There's a tie.
You could increase it to seven. Oh, well, you did have seven in the past.
Yeah, I, I'm fine, I'm a seven.
That's kind of an easy solution.
I think so too. And I agree. We have the vote for it. I, I would be, and if someone's ill, then, then it's not like the others are altered. Yeah.
You do get back to that original issue, but you don't have to have four for a, uh, for a quorum.
And I don't think that would be a problem.
And it might not hurt for somebody to talk to, uh, some of those folks that changed before Cory, maybe you can see why I changed. That's my recollection, but that's been a long time ago.
That's what the resolution says. Getting the council.
Another idea too is, say if we kept the bribe and we have a couple of alternatives.
Yeah.
You know, and they, and they take a year and they learn the system.
Yeah, I, I brought that up. I don't know if you remember in January, I brought up about increasing to seven. I brought up about having alternates and I was told no, so.
What's that?
Yeah.
So you just want all the control?
No, no, your mom does.
It's okay, it's okay. Like, okay, it's okay, like. Okay, so, so I think, I think a good solution then tonight would be we appoint three members, so we have a, a planning commission. We draft a resolution to have seven members. We have that ready to sign at our next meeting. And at the next meeting, we will put that, and Bryce, would you like to be with me then? And we select those two and I guarantee one will be Sheldon.
I, I don't know.
We, we have seven. We have seven.
I don't think this is the type of place to cut a deal. I think we need to think about it. And it's not gonna hurt the table for next week, we need it together and.
Well, we have a meeting next week. We had a few things for him. So.
I'm not sure.
My neighbor is on the the meeting next week.
No, no, let's don't. No, we're not. We're not. Let's just stop. Okay, okay, let's just stop. Okay. Okay, what is on the next time?
Two oversight structures. Just need to vote in the chair, the vice chairman, and then question mark, we allowed to use some fines discussion.
Yeah, we've, we've put off, they allowed fines for quite some time now because we've been waiting, but they haven't had time. But anyway, we need to get that done. I don't, I don't know that it's fair to people to keep putting it off. We've never not had a planning commission because we've never had a time when the mayor appointed people that city council said they wouldn't approve them.
It's, it's not that at all. It's you could, in the motion, we can say they, they can remain. The existing planning commission can remain until it's replaced.
Well, you, you can't make that motion because then that's not in our ordinance. That's not in, it violates the code. So that, so our choices tonight are then, we appoint three planning commission members because we have three that are up for appointment. As mayor, I followed the code. I have given you names of three completely competent men to be on the planning commission. So your choice tonight is you vote for him or you don't vote for it, or you table it. If you table it, then we don't have a planning commission. We do have some subdivisions that need to be worked on, that at least one that's already in the process and probably three that are really close in the works and we have to be following state code already for that. And so once they have a completed submission for the subdivision, there's a time limit. There's a fifteen day time limit and then once it goes to planning commission, they have a fifteen day time limit. So there are some time restraints there. I mean, my, I, I, I have these, these people and I mean, you know, like I said, a couple of them, I really didn't really thought were a great challenge. I do agree that Sheldon should be on our council because of their experience. I felt really bad that we lost experience and I voice, a voice that I wanted to experience. I think if we can come to some compromise instead of stopping everything that's tracks. I think that's good. But that's up to to us. I guess last year, it just felt like we didn't get what done like we planned on. I, I would like to see a seven-member planning commission. I, I had mentioned that to Debbie, I've mentioned that in January. I think with everything we have coming up, I would like to see a seven. That's why, like I said, I brought it up.
Why are we discussing this now?
Well, I think because it was on the, it was asked to be on the agenda. You and Bryce asked to have it on the agenda is why we are. So.
So I, as a city council, I'd, I'd like to see us be able to go over this and review it and come up with the best solution for a more long-term solution. And, and stagger the years, you know, I don't know how we ended up like this.
Well, couldn't, couldn't we start two additional ones that we put on staggered their years? Mhm, yeah, definitely.
We're getting staggered this year if you want.
Yeah, it's, yes. The two, the two-year then puts in the same time as the other two and then we'd have three going out, so. Let's just stagger everybody that's coming on. Yeah.
But, well, you have to do it within five of your timeframe. It's five of your
The four-year, four-year term.
But you, so you'd have to have three of them on the same year. You'd have to go like two, one, two, one, two.
Yeah, or whatever, whatever, you know, thing that we need to do to get things staggered.
So what was the staggering before? I know there was staggering before. Was it three, one year and then wait two years and two the next?
Do you want to share yours?
Hey, so I know, I know Amanda taken someone, she's done the end of twenty twenty six as is Bryce because he replaced.
I wasn't sharing, but I was gonna wait until the meeting to send, give us, since you have an update on it right now. I just did a little bit of research on the cities that have their terms staggered.
The problem with five is it'll always be this way unless if you give someone like a five-year. I, well, you have like a two-year, so in two years we'll have two people that'll go off. And then you would still have three remaining. We wouldn't have to, Debbie, like you said, if we staggered their terms so we could give someone. Even if you wanted to do that tonight, if you appointed two people for three-year terms, one person for a four-year term, then in two years would have two more people. So in two years would have two new ones. In three years would have two new ones and in four years would have one new one. And that could end up being a
Staggered out, do you know, man?
I think staggering, I mean, it's, I think it's a good idea. I agree with the mayor on that. I, these cities. Uh, so I just did, and I just did this today. But Plain City, Riverdale, West Point, Clearfield, Clinton, Morgan City, Roswell City, Public City, Elwood City, and I didn't want to keep going because I knew you guys have a time limit, but all of these do not have the majority of their commission being changed the same year. So they, all of them have staggered their terms so that they have maybe two, some commissions have as many as seven, two alternates or things like that. Where they don't have more than three that are going, but nobody, none of the cities, and I looked at the time, have the majority of their commission all changing at the same time. Um, I, I wrote up this proposal that has a suggestion for staggering that I'm just gonna bring up during the meeting, but maybe it's more appropriate now since you guys are talking about it now. I just said responsibilities of the planning commission will be increasingly implemented this year due to the new legislation that was recently passed by the state.
I don't need to cut you off. We just give us kind of a synopsis so we have time to talk about other things.
Well, it's only one thing, but basically, everything that is coming into finding commission this year, the magnitude of this new subdivision process that we're gonna be doing. The season commissioners that we have were involved in that process. They really worked hard. They put hours of time into it to get that put in place and to help implement it. They know what frontwards and backwards, same as our general plan that was recently put into place a couple of years ago. They also have been a part of the deliberation process for some of the major applications that the planning commission is currently deliberating on right now. I think it would be a disservice to the city to have brand new commissioners come in at this point. And their first or second meeting, they're gonna be voting on something that they have not been a part of the deliberation process. They haven't been there for the meetings, the public feedback. My suggestion would be to appoint one commissioner this year to fill Commissioner Smith's seat. He took over for Commissioner Simpson. And then have their term expire in four years, um, at the end of twenty twenty eight. Commissioner Greer and Commissioner Severin would continue to serve until January of twenty twenty six. At which point you would appoint two commissioners to fill those seats. And that term would expire twenty twenty nine and every four years thereafter. January twenty twenty seven, you'd appoint two commissioners, Commissioner to mine and Commissioner Madison's place. Those terms would expire twenty thirty and every four years thereafter. So if you did that, you'd have one year this year, two year next year, two year the next year, then one, then two, then two. By doing that, you would help ensure that no more than two commission seats would be open each year. It would help promote consistency and adherence to policy and environment where, and an environment where the majority of the commission members will be adequately trained and experienced before making crucial decisions, which is almost to be.
Okay, thank you. So I agree with the staggering. I think, let's go back. We have three good names here tonight that again, we can vote on that I feel really good about. And during the interview process, the very first day when we were done, I asked the question to both Debbie and Malcolm, are there any of these that you would feel uncomfortable having sit on the planning commission? And I was told no. There weren't any that they felt like they would be uncomfortable with. I think it's fine to go on like we said about if you want to stagger it. If you want to have a seven-member council, planning commission, excuse me, I think is a good idea. That's something that we had already talked about. I don't feel comfortable just not having a planning commission and telling these people that have already applied to go ahead. I, I think the members that have been on there have been great. I don't have a problem with anybody that is currently on there. But this is something that has been done now since we have become a city and it was something that's been the mayor's responsibility to do. And that's what they have done.
So we'll, we'll figure out.
Yes.
So we got two and point six, right?
So, so Amanda and Bryce will be done. No, no, yes.
So we need to two for four years.
Yes.
One for three years.
Yeah. So appoint two for four years and even tonight, if we appointed one of these for three years, then that gets it off the stagger. Because then in two years, when Amanda and Bryce's terms are up, then we would be appointing two.
When it produce, well, I think we're all, maybe we're gonna do seven now, right?
Well, no, I don't think we're all in agreement. We just talked about, but we haven't really discussed that.
I think I think if it is compromised, I mean.
I think seven is a compromise.
I, I do too.
Subdivision.
Yeah. Wouldn't, wouldn't we have a compromise then?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think we need to have some I mean, the contention level is pretty high, you know, and it's been that way for a while.
Oh, I appreciate.
But I would, I would, uh, what Amanda put out here, Commissioner Greer and Commissioner Severin would retain two, serve until point six. I like that.
One thing I think though, you're forgetting in all this process is we have a lot of really competent eager people to serve here in Hooper. We have a lot. Never ever in the code has it ever been, it's always been the same. The mayor appoints, you approve. That, that is, that is the process. Let me just finish. So so saying that we have three new people doesn't take anything away from the ones that have been serving. No one will ever say that Sheldon hasn't done a great job because he did. No one will ever say that Blake hasn't done a great job because he did. No one will ever say that Jessica didn't do a great job and she didn't have as long of a time, but she still did. But we still have other people here in Hooper that would like to serve.
That's right. That's why they're staggered and.
Well, that's staggering is that we have more people that want to.
So now they're seven. So now, if you want two more additional that don't have any experience, the whole, the whole reason
I'm not saying.
Reason for this is to keep experience on the planning commission. Because they gotta navigate through some pretty treacherous things this coming year, which are gonna hit them right square in the head. So I think, and compromise.
I think and compromise, you know, that's been brought up as well as being a council. You know, hopefully you would, you know, see our point here that we would really like to see those two experienced individuals stay on there. We're willing to.
Appoint three and have both two and then have seven.
I mean, that's.
Is that agreeable? Debbie, you would agree with that, would you? Yes, so we had the three applied. Sheldon had applied in, but then that, yes, and then we would have that.
So I still think. You can't just say, oh, we're gonna pick those two. Those other two have an equal right and opportunity to be selected as well.
Yes.
Seeing down to applicants, I felt that those two would again.
So what you're saying then, Ryan, is then we appoint these three tonight, then we take those other applications that we had. Out of those applications, we have, we re look at those and select two more. And so we have.
Seven.
Seven.
And maybe just to. Uh, where our numbers turn out to be.
We could stagger them and have them maybe be done in.
Well, or we can. Go one for four, one for three. One for one, and then those other two, isn't that one for one, one for.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Anyways, we figure out numbers.
How does that work?
To appoint for one year, you probably ought to have somebody that's been serving already. Try to learn it and get up to par and then go off in a year, that's for you.
So we could do two for three years, one for four years. But is that something we would have to have changed in our?
Well, sure, the ordinance.
Yeah.
So we'd have to make it. Do that next time before you can do. The next few days, that's that's.
Well, so now we would need to appoint tonight in order to have a plan because as of do tonight. And then do the ordinance next time. So we could even still have those be, but what, we could change the ordinance and one of those for them could even maybe change to an additional year.
The ordinance would have to specify the time.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Would you just do like, not convert seat one, two, three, four, five and say, okay, so seat one is a four year.
Yes, the three year. Yeah, we could do that the same as like with that. The position. And that would probably be good, to assign a position, cause then if you go in as planning commission seat number four. Then you know your term would be for, yeah.
But I mean, eventually, or even next year, right? We start going all four year terms.
Yeah.
So if you have seven members, you'd have to have uh position one through seven.
Right.
And probably the two remaining people now would be one and two, because you know their term.
Yeah.
So you'd have to set the the term that you appoint for for the other five. Uh, and then. Once they served whatever the term initially is, from that point on, they're also.
Okay, well, I think that sounds like a good solution. To have it be so we could make the motion tonight then to appoint the the. Well, maybe if if someone makes a motion tonight, they can just explain that then, that we make the motion that we, and then we are going to. Look at the ordinance to.
We don't assign. We've no terms assigned. So so we're short, can they perform with one sugar? Tonight. I mean, this is the night we're all out. Number two, the other. Four, another.
You don't change it to seven, then, boy, you can't.
Well, yeah, but if somebody happens to not come, because like last meeting, for example, we only had three people there. So you only have three planning commission members and then one person doesn't. If we.
To next week.
Next week. Or you can, like we said, appoint the three tonight without assigning the terms. And then we go through and we take those other interviews. I mean, that would work winded if we just appoint the three tonight. We don't put the terms. And then we end up changing them.
Yeah, the only one you can't change the terms are under the sitting.
Yes. Yes. Okay, was there anything else? Cause we need to move up to the Russia. Anything else on our agenda that you needed? Well, we'll still discuss it, yes, but we'll just, we won't approve it. Is it still be good and Malcolm?